Father in heaven, we thank you for being here this evening. Father, we pray that you remind us through your spirit that we are to move in the authority and the confidence in which you made us. Father, help us to realize that if we are feeling somewhat timid, help us to realize where our source comes from. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jack. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
I'd like to ask the commission to delete item 6A, the memorandum of understanding for infill development. I've had some contact from some commissioners who would like to review the policy contained in that ordinance. I understand it's not a time-sensitive matter, so my recommendation would be that we put the ordinance on our workshop for next Tuesday night for review and proceed from there.
Okay. Thank you. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. We have Cal Ross here with the Paducah Housing Authority for the annual pilot payment.
And I got my flower. Thank you.
Yes. I have mine on my car already.
You do?
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is John Shadle. I'm vice chair for the Housing Authority of Paducah, representing our board, and we'll be discussing a pilot payment to the city, which stands for the paid in pay in lieu of taxes that we make annually after our audit every year, and also an annual copy of the 2013 audit, which Cal will discuss later. I will say that, representing the board, we are supporting an amendment, which I'll read in just a minute, and would like for you all to consider this after Cal's given his presentation. The amendment is that we amend, that we would like for you to consider the amendment to change section 3B of the cooperation agreement to read, "The amount paid is limited to the federal appropriation percentage of federal operating funds." After Cal gives his presentation, I'll be presenting a check for the pilot of $145,924.90. This will make, this will be our 63rd payment to the city. So, I don't know whether that's a little history a lot of people are not aware of.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, audience. My name is Cal. I am the director of the Housing Authority of Paducah, and I'm glad to be here. Normally, I don't make a big to-do out of this, but it's becoming an issue with the Housing Authority, and so I've wanted to take a few minutes and discuss with you a possible, for discussion only, change, the cooperation agreement that changes how we calculate pilot. Pilot, when it was conceived back in 1950, when we signed the original agreement with the city of Paducah, it's still in place today and has been for 63 years without any change. What pilot's about is that, as you know, as a non-for-profit, we don't pay any property taxes. And apparently, that must have been an issue in those days with cities back in the '30s and '40s when public housing was kind of conceived. And apparently, cities were required to provide essential services to the housing authorities, such as police and fire and other things, and you received nothing for it. So, there must have been some complaints. They must have gone from the cities to the Department of Housing and Urban Development at that time. And they kind of worked out that deal by saying, "We're going to have you guys to present a cooperation agreement to the city, and that if the city continues to provide those kinds of services that you would have provided anyway, we'll make a pilot payment." And the payment in lieu of tax was born, and so instead of property taxes, we'll make a payment in lieu of taxes. But they also added a little caveat in there that we will reimburse the Housing Authority for 100% of the pilot payment. And with all the changes in the federal funding, this wasn't one of those things that was spared either. It also got the ax, and so the federal government only reimburses us for the percentage of the annual operating subsidy. And for the last several years, it's been 81 point some odd percent, and it's been 82%, it's been 87%, 86%. Well, that net difference comes out of my operating cash that I get from tenants when they pay their rent. So, the government's only giving me a certain portion of that, so the $145,000 that we presented to you in just a few minutes. $25,500 comes out of my general fund that the government doesn't reimburse me for, that they should have reimbursed me, but that's just the nature of the beast when you're dealing with a federal agency. So, we would like for you guys to consider a possible amendment to the cooperation agreement that will limit the payment, like it's always been, to what the government gives me for pilot to pay to you all and not make me pay the full 100% under the agreement, because it's hurting my programs of the Housing Authority with every dollar that I have to spend here. And we've made these things for, like as John said, for 63 years. So, we would like for you guys to consider the possibility of changing the cooperation agreement that will not be 10% of shelter rent, but 10% of shelter rent less what the government doesn't give us to pay the city for that, because it was a city and a federal program to reimburse the city. So, that's all we're asking for you to take into consideration.
Could you give me an example of how that payment is, has affected any of your after-school programs?
We don't have any now. We don't do anything in resident services other than pay for a coordinator, and that resident services person helps us to do what little we can.
I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I heard you say it's affecting, the payment that you're making is affecting some programming?
Yes.
Could you give me an example of how that's going on?
Yes. Every year, I have to do a budget, and I never know if I have enough money to make my expenses. We build into the budget the full payment to you, whether we get reimbursement or not, such things as increase in utility expenses. We don't know next year, because I'm only going to get 80% again, and it dips into our cash. So, what it's affecting is, is our ability to meet ordinary expenses. Operating, the operating subsidy goes to pay salaries and benefits, utilities. I don't have to tell anybody that lives in Paducah that the utilities have gone up significant. For me, it cost me an additional $300,000 a year, and the government's not giving me any more money. And so, we're trying to help to stay within our ability. This is an unbudgeted kind of expense that we've been absorbing for quite a while, and so we think that maybe we could ask the city to only limit it to what I get reimbursed with the government, because that's the way it was set up initially many, many years ago. And I wouldn't mind working with the city manager on this, on this particular issue, and drafting something for the city commission if you consider and entertain the possibility of us amending the cooperation agreement.
Cal, what is the formula right now that determines the payment?
It's, it's a formula that's called 10% of shelter rent charge, section 3B of the cooperation agreement. And essentially, it's the rent that we charge the tenants that live in there, less the accounts receivable, and you add back, accounts receivable previous years are corrected, less utilities. And so, there's a net figure. In this case here, I think we netted $1,450,000. We take 10% of that figure on that sheet that I gave you all, and that becomes the pilot payment. So, it is formula-driven. But the government doesn't give us the 100% anymore. They only give us 80%, or whatever the percentage is. That's why I said if we could tie it, the percentage for the operating subsidy that we get, that's what they reimburse us for. Let us pay you what we get.
So, that would, I mean, not knowing how that federal appropriation might change from year to year would potentially put the city at risk for a huge drop?
Well, I know it'd be a huge drop, but this year was, they gave it to us at 80%. This coming year, we're talking about as much as 85 or 87%. So, the cut would only be 13 to 15% of the amount that we calculate. It would be that portion that we have to absorb that they no longer fund us. So, we're giving you money that we really don't have. So, that's the first issue. And then, the second issue, is there any more questions on that? It's just something for you to think about. The second issue is Adam Edlin is the state auditor, and he probably has seen in the press quite a bit that they have identified these special purpose government entities for us, SPGEs. And you have a lot of people out here, like a fire district, that taxes, and they get money from property taxes. Well, the Housing Authority doesn't tax anybody. We don't get any money from the state of Kentucky or the city of Paducah. And why we've been identified is beyond me, but they've identified us as one of those entities. All of our money comes from federal governments or comes from the tenants. And I just recently had to go into the state auditor's website, and sure enough, the Housing Authority of Paducah was there as one of these SPGEs, and I had to fill out a poop sheet, much like the questions you were asking me, who the members of the board are, how many dollars we get, what's our general expenses? And for the price of putting it in, it costs us $500. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot of money to the Housing Authority when you're watching your nickels and dimes. And to show this, I thought this might be a good practice, Jeff, is to start giving the city a copy of our audit. If the state auditor should ever ask you, since you created us in 1938 and we spun off, you probably don't have very many audits in your file. We are audited, just like you guys are. And why Adam Edlin doesn't think we're not audited, we are. And this is probably the best audit we've ever received. When they did their presentation to the board, they were very complimentary of the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority staff, and the Board of Commissioners.
You're required to send one to Mr. Edlin to sit on the shelf in Frankfurt, too, aren't you?
No. We do not.
Oh, really? I thought that that requires audits to be filed with the state as well.
We've never have been required to file one with the state.
Well, no, but under this new legislation, I think you are.
So, I wanted to give this one to your city clerk, so that you can start putting them in the file.
Well, don't give us your last one if you haven't sent one to Frankfurt yet.
And so, with that, these are two issues, pilot and the audit. We just wanted to share that information with you. We'll turn the podium back over to John. Well, as I had mentioned before, this is the 63rd payment to the city on this payment in lieu of taxes, and I'll present this to the city manager. And the amount of $145,924.90.
Appreciate it. Thank you. 25.
Well, we just rounded it.
Yeah. It says 25, so.
That's all we have. We want to thank the city commission, mayor, listening to us.
Thank you.
You need to excuse me for just a moment.
Next, we have a presentation by Dabney Hall and Carol Vanderbeau, and this is on our Paducah Dogwood Trail 50th Anniversary Preview. Welcome, Dabney. And we have...
Mary Lynn, yes. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Dabney Hall, and this is Mary Lynn Thompson. We are co-chairs for the Paducah Dogwood Trail this year. This is our 50th year. In 1964, Dolly McNutt visited her husband's hometown of Knoxville, Tennessee, saw a beautiful lighted dogwood trail there, and came back to Paducah. She was chairman of the Civic Beautification Board, and she asked the board to consider having a trail. And they started with two blocks of Sycamore Drive. And this year, we have about 10 miles of trail. So, we've come a long way. Also, in the year 2000, the Paducah Dogwood Trail was designated a local legacy by the National Library of Congress. That's a pretty nice distinction. The Kentucky Derby and the Fancy Farm Picnic are two other local legacies. Also, this year, we have a very nice distinction. Luxury Travel Magazine has named us one of the top spring flower festivals, and we're included with places like Charleston, South Carolina, Rhode Island, New Mexico. It's really quite an honor. We were, we were named in the top six. I printed out a little, all the commissioners have this. I'll pass it around, because it is pretty interesting. So, we feel like we may have more visitors this year because of that exposure. And I would like to thank the Tourism Board, because they did a fabulous job of promoting Paducah, and I'm feel sure that's why we have that distinction this year. Also, we have, we're going to be giving away decals to promote the trail. I think most of you in here got one tonight. If you didn't, I'll leave a couple out on the table. Then, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we have coming up. For Commissioners, I'm skipping over the first one, and you'll know why in a minute. March the 24th to 27th, we are going to be, we are once again having the Dogwood Art and Photography Contest. The Civic Beautification Board sponsors it, but the Paducah School of Art and Design will be judging it. So, the 24th through the 27th, you can bring your entries to the Paducah School of Art and Design. Then, on March the 28th, the school will do the judging, and the winners of both categories, art and photography, will be displayed in the Mayor's Art Club exhibit here at City Hall in the mayor's office. And that's a lovely thing to do. Then, April the 12th, we have our big dogwood tree sale. We've done this for the last three years, and we have six different nurseries that have helped us with this, Blooms and Gardens, Eads, James Sanders, Edwards, Montgomery Gardens, and Walls. You can visit any of those nurseries on April the 12th, that's a Saturday, and they will have dogwood trees for sale at that time. Hopefully, that'll be maybe right at the beginning of the Dogwood Trail. Then, on April the 13th, Bike World sponsors the Dogwood Trail Bike Ride. They've done this for many years. I know that sometimes they have as many as 300 bike riders, and they start at 2:30 at Bike World, and when they finish up, they have free hot dogs and hamburgers for everybody. So, you might want to think about that. Then, in mid-April, we guess mid-April, because of course, we don't determine the beginning of the trail. Mother Nature does that for us. We will, after we've done our judging, well, first of all, we will print in the paper when the judging will take place, so that people know when the trail starts, know when they're going to be judged, and are, you know, ready to get their awards. We will bring the, when we have the awards, we'll have them here at the commission meeting sometime in April. And this year, we have some new awards. We've got a Grand Old Dogwood Award, Baby Dogwood Award for people who maybe have little trees that they've just gotten started. And then, we're also going to have another award named for Dolly McNutt, and it's going to be sort of the Best of Show Award, and we're going to call it the Dolly. So, we're really looking forward to that. We also are offering, we're going to have some awards for any churches or businesses that have dogwoods and light up. So, if you've got a business and you have dogwoods in your, in your parking lot or your yard, be sure and light those up. Let's see, what else? Am I forgetting something, Mary Lynn? I think that's about it. Now, the last thing I want to talk about, though, is because this is the 50th, we wanted to have something special as a commemorative piece. And fortunately for us, Carol Vanderbeau, who is a local artist, is on the Civic Beautification Board, and she designed dogwood pins like the one I'm wearing. She did, she designed and had cut out of metal these beautiful pins. She hand painted every one of them. They are signed and numbered, and they're the commemorative pin for the Dogwood Trail in this 50th year. And we are going to have these at Grace Episcopal Church on March the 8th. And we're, we're putting it this way, we would love for people to make a $10 donation and purchase a pin that is non-embellished. Do you have on, you have embellished. Who doesn't have on an embellished one? Cindy. Will Cindy Jones stand up? She has one that's non-embellished. That's a $10 donation, and then, a $15 donation goes for the pins that are embellished with the little crystals. And that's going to be, as I said, March the 8th at Grace Episcopal Church from 10 to 2. So, anyone who'd like to purchase one of these commemorative pins, come to Grace Church at that time. And now, we have a special presentation for Mayor Kaler. Would you please come forward?
In honor of the 50th Dogwood Trail, it is our pleasure to present to Mayor Kaler a limited edition commemorative dogwood pin.
It's beautiful. I really appreciate it and all of your all's hard work. It's going to be a great 50th year anniversary, so.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate Civic Beautification, and they're one of those organizations that really makes Paducah special. And there's, they're those volunteers that do all the hard work, that, that make us look special as well. So, we really appreciate your work throughout the community.
Commissioner Abraham with minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for January 28th, 2014, and February 18th, 2014, city commission meetings be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Okay, we have some appointments. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Stephen Smith as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. This term will expire February 25th, 2017. And whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Raphael Banks to replace David White, who has resigned, as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. This term will expire July 25th, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Kaler in appointing Stephen Smith and Raphael Banks as members of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
City clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Beverly McKinley as a member of the Nuisance Code Enforcement Board, which term will expire February 26th, 2017.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kaler to reappoint Beverly McKinley as a member of the Nuisance Code Enforcement Board.
Second.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Ja'Pom Askew Robinson as a member of the Padukam-Cracken County Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency. This term will expire February 23rd, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kaler in reappointing Ja'Pom Askew Robinson as a member of the Padukam-Cracken County Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. We'll go on to our motions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents, certificate of liability insurance, ANK Construction Company, Central Pavement Company of Paducah, Crouch Building Associates, D&amp;D Construction of Paducah, Smith Builders, Commissioners Deeds, 1200 Hampton Avenue, 23, 1243 North 13th Street. Agreements and contract promissory notes between Paducah Golf Commission and the city of Paducah, Kentucky for capital improvement projects and equipment needs for the Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course. Financial advisor engagement contract with Hillard Lyons for project bond settlement agreement and mutual release with attic renovation system for the Noble Park Pool Rehabilitation Project. Paducah Power Electric Rates for February 2014. City of Paducah Financial Report for the period ending September 30th, 2013. The City of Paducah Financial Report for the period ending December 31st, 2013. Notice of Cancellation of Board of Commissioner Meetings of the City of Paducah, Kentucky for February 11th, 2014. Continuation Certificate with Western Surety Company for excavating permit bond for Ray Black and Son Incorporated. Bids, Engineering Public Works Department. Bid for Concrete Ready Mix 2014-2015. Federal Materials. Cotton Ready Mix. Bidder disqualified. Parks Department. I'm coming home, y'all. I'm almost there. Bid for exclusive beverage rights for Paducah Parks Facility, Coca-Cola, Pepsi Mid-America. The asterisk was by Pepsi Mid-America, because they got the winning bid. Boom.
Second. City clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye. We'll go, go on to municipal orders. Commissioner Galt, please.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
We need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. For tonight's personnel action, I would like to highlight for you one item. We, I believe, the Commissioners, you all received in information about the overview of the selection process for the Downtown Development Specialist. We'd like to recommend Melinda Winchester, the most qualified applicant. Our selection process really netted a great group of applicants, and we're pleased to submit Melinda for your approval. I'd like to thank, Darlene Mazzone is in the audience tonight. She served as part of our core interview team. I'd like to thank her. It's been great getting to know her a little bit more through this process. And Steve Irvin and I rounded out the core interview team there. Give you a little bit of background information about Melinda. You also saw this in your packet, 11 years as a career professional in historic preservation as a consultant. In that, in those roles, she's worked with all levels of state and federal officials, property and business owners. Her information and understanding of tax credits, both state and federal level, are really impressive. Most recently, four years ago, she came from the St. Louis area as a Historic Preservation Director, but most recently, she's been a Property Development Manager and a Historic Preservation Consultant. So, we're pleased to, to make that recommendation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to say, Steve?
Briefly, just really excited to have Melinda on board to join the Planning Department. There's a lot of, obviously, redevelopment potential within the downtown area and low town area, and I think with her on board, it just really completes the team that we have in the Planning Department. It will be an incredible asset. I'm really excited for her to hit the ground running, so, thank you.
Well, I'm very impressed with Melinda. I had lunch with her one day. It's actually the first time I've got to have a talk with you. I did mention your name to someone in the community, and they were thrilled, because they worked with you before and had nothing but good things to say about your professionalism. So...
I'm very, I thank you very much. You're so fortunate. I can't wait to meet you.
You're welcome.
Anything to say?
We'll be better for it. Good.
And when are you starting?
Well, if we vote yes.
Well.
I'd like to introduce Melinda Winchester. Good evening.
That's like just in case. I'm going to say something.
Yeah, yeah.
No, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to working with you.
I do, too. Thank you.
All right. City clerk.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
City manager.
Mr. Abraham.
Aye.
Mr. Galt.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kaler.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
May I say one thing?
Sure. City manager.
It'd be an appropriate time for me to, once again, but most definitively recognize the tremendous efforts and leadership put forward, especially by directors Steve Irvin and Mark Thompson during the transition period. The staffing, filling of that, in some ways, completes the transition, or at least takes it to a new starting point. So, I want to publicly recognize their leadership and how they step forward, and many of those around them as well, that, and, again, that, that made this possible, and I think allowed us to keep moving forward with, without any interruptions along the way.
Sure. Mark, come on up. Introduce Molly.
Just hold it up.
I thought, yeah, you need to get up here and introduce.[1773.01] Commissioner Mark, come on up. Introduce Molly.
Just hold it up.
I thought, yeah, you need to get up here and introduce.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to introduce the other of that, and y'all voted on her position a couple of weeks ago. And this is Molly Tomasello, and she is the Special Events Coordinator, and she came onboard last Thursday, and she's still here. And so, if you want to make sure that you meet her and that she becomes a face that Paducah sees, and so, have a question for her or something?
Hi, welcome. Just like to say that I'm excited to be here. I'd gotten to meet a few of you, actually, before I started, but I'm just really looking forward to getting busy and working with all the different districts, Lower Town and the Downtown Business District and Parks Department, and I think it's going to be a good thing for Paducah, so I'm excited to be here.
We're excited to have you.
Welcome, both of you.
Thank you.
She was a little surprised to, being a Green Bay Packers fan, to come this far south and run into a city manager who's a Vikings fan. We'll work through that. Neither one of us had a lot to brag about right now, so...
Purple People Eater.
Oh, yeah.
Did you have something to say?
Well, I'm just thinking she brought some of that Green Bay weather with her.
Yeah. That's right.
Okay, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right, um, municipal, okay, I move that, excuse me, I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the execution of an online grant application to obtain a Cycle Kids Fit Kids or Happy Kids Program Grant through Cycle Kids in the amount of $15,000 to be used by the Paducah Parks Department be adopted.
Second. Hi, Amy.
Good evening. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about this grant. I hope you don't mind that I'm stepping in for Steve over there. The Fit Kids or Happy Kids Grant is a grant that will allow us to provide a Cycle Kids Program in Paducah, which is a program that teaches fourth and fifth grade students about bicycle safety as well as good nutrition. We plan to implement this program within our after-school program right now, with hopes to expand to summer programming in the future. It is a three-year program, and the grant provides all of the equipment that's needed for the program and does not require a match from the city. So that's our favorite part about it.
It's very good. And I love the portions of the bike-friendly initiatives, which are bikes on Broadway and back rodeo.
Yeah, we've really been making a move towards that, just as a community in general, by adding all of these programs, and I think this will be a great asset because we'll be able to hit these students when they're just learning about bicycling and what the proper rules of the road will be for them, so...
And I know the Governor talked recently about the importance of bikes and having more bike paths and trails in communities, so this goes right along with it.
Yes.
All right.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a matching grant in the amount of $6,300 through the Kentucky Heritage Council, State Historic Preservation Office, and National Park Service for a certified local government program grant to be used to host a commission assistance and mentoring program, and Historic Preservation Mini-Conference be adopted.
Second.
Steve?
Yes, the city of Paducah is a certified local government, and with us being a certified local government, the Kentucky Heritage Council has actually asked us to host the conference this year, the regional conference. There's approximately 175 people from across the state will be visiting Paducah for two or three days. The grant's for $6,300. There is a match. Hopefully, the match that you see there will be much less. We put the maximum amount on there as we have not secured the facilities to actually hold the event. That is probably the maximum amount. Hopefully, we can have some in-kind services from some of the local places that have these venues, and we can come in much lower. But we're kind of excited about it to have people from across the state come into our community and spend some time, not only teaching us, but also get to see our community.
Very good.
Steve, when you all go for your training, and you always go up to the lake, is this could be kind of in lieu of that?
Yeah, this, all of our boards are required through House Bill 55 to receive a certain amount of hours each year. This will be able to qualify for that also. So your Historical Architecture View Commission plus Board of Adjustment, because they'll talk about some of the things the boards do, will be able to use this for their credit hours.
Very good. Thank you. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Ordinances, adoption. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky League of Cities for a 2013-2014 Matching Safety Grant Award. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky League of Cities for a 2013-2014 Matching Safety Grant Award that will reimburse the city $3,000 for the purchase of one security camera, and any remaining funds will be used for training costs for the human resource staff. Matching funds of $3,000 will be provided by the Human Resource Department and the Department of Information Technology.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on this? City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement and other associated documents between the city of Paducah and the Paducah Police Department Bargaining Unit. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement and other associated documents between the city of Paducah and the Paducah Police Department Bargaining Unit. This agreement shall be effective from July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Okay. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. So we'll go ahead and sign this?
Yes.
We have Anthony Copeland here tonight with the, is the president?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
President of the FOP, welcome. Good. If you want to come over here, you want me to sign it first?
Go.
Oh.
Go ahead. He's scared of... She's trying to...
Don't mind us.
A blue pen. Yeah, supposed to use a blue pen. Yes, thank you. And we give him one of these.
Yes.
Anthony.
Do you want one of these agreements? I mean, we can keep both of them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you sign both of these? Oh, Mr. Copeland?
We do have to sign both of them.
Okay.
Is that one signed?
I think that's the one that isn't signed. That way you guys have an original and we have an original.
It's legal. You're welcome.
Are we waiting?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Paducah and Professional Firefighters of Paducah Local 168 International Association of Firefighters. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Professional Firefighters of Paducah Local 168 International Association of Firefighters. This agreement will become effective July 1st, 2014, and expire on June 30th, 2017.
Second. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. And Barry Carter, the president of the IFF, is on his way, so we'll go ahead to our next one, and when he comes in, we'll stop and sign the agreement. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky approving a professional service agreement for construction inspection services associated with the Greenway Trail Phase II project, and authorizing the mayor to execute said contract. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby approves the professional services agreement between the city of Paducah and ICA Engineering, Inc. for construction inspection services associated with the Greenway Trail Phase II project in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Further, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized to execute the contract.
Second.
Thank you. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Federal Materials Company LLC for sale to the city of its requirement of concrete ready mix and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city accepts the bid of Federal Materials for sale to the city of its required requirement of concrete ready mix for the remainder of 2014 and calendar year 2015, ending December 31st, 2015, with a one-year option to renew ending December 31st, 2016, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for the following prices. Under description, Class A Concrete Cubic Yard, unit price $85.50. Class II Concrete Cubic Yard, unit price $87.50. Class M Concrete Cubic Yard is $115 per unit price. Flowable Field, 1,000 per square inch, Cubic Yard, unit price $71, and Flowable Field, 80 per square inch, Cubic Yard, is $69 under unit price.
Second. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go to our ordinances introduction. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
You know, I think that the irony of this is just unbelievable. But anyway, I'm going to read this, even though I voted against this project a year ago. I just, I accused Ms. Anderson of twisting my tail by making me read this, but she claims it was purely by accident.
I offered to read it.
So here goes. No, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to disappoint Tammy.
I'll read it.
"I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute change order number one with Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC for the Ohio River Boat Launch Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute a change order number one for a contract increase in the amount of $17,139.83 for the city of Paducah's Ohio River Boat Launch Project, increasing the total contract amount to $2,605,061."
Second.
Okay.
Okay, Rick.
Mayor Commission, what this, this project is a unit price project, meaning that you have several units, and this is the, I guess, reconciliation of all units used on that project. So on the $2.6 million, $2.5 and some change, this project overran $17,000. The project, from the contractor's point of view, is complete. We will be putting in some signs to help people, and some other things that you all noticed, I guess, over the weekend, we had our first fishing tournament over the weekend with this project, and it was well-received, and I think you all got some feedback from some folks and saying, well, what about this, what about that?
Well, I will say, I spent some time down there on Saturday, went by Saturday morning, and talked to Ken Freeman. I believe he was the person putting on the fishing tournament, and he could not have been more complimentary of the boat launch. He said with just a couple of things, of which I emailed you later, some signage to help the boaters get there, some lighting, which I believe we're putting in anyway, and I think there was a third thing, but I don't remember, it wasn't anything significant.
Electrical.
Oh, and he asked about an electrical pole. He brought his own generators, but he asked if there could be an electrical pole, and seemed like easy fixes to me. I visited with some of the fishermen, they loved it, they thought it was one of the nicest places around. Some were from local, some were from out of state, so they had been in the town, spent the night, they'd launched that next morning at 4:00. He asked me then, he said, why don't you come back later this afternoon when they're coming in? I did. I had a great time meeting them, and I just want to tell you that they were so complimentary of the boat launch, and said it was one of the nicest in this part of the country and had the potential to be the nicest.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner, and one of the things I wanted to, I guess, share is that we actually have the pavement cut, but the pavement is still there because we needed to wait for better weather to put those poles in with Paducah Power. We're fortunate to be having fishing tournaments in the end of February, of which, you know, we weren't totally complete, with some signage, much like we're, you know, boat launch this way, and, oh, there's a river there, you know, put some safeties, what we call Chevron signs, hey, don't drive off in the river. So we, and working with Paducah Power as well, and getting our lighting, and also our cameras for our security. I know that's been a concern, security being down there, so we got three cameras that's going to be going in on the poles that support the lights as well. So we're not done yet, but these are things that are done operationally and with utilities monies.
Mr. Freeman said he would be happy to come back and speak at one of our city commission meetings. He talked about several different levels of tournaments that he puts on throughout the country. He had, who's Bass, Bass Fish, what Bass? Fisherman? What is it?
Abe Winkleman.
The store, Adam?
Bass Pro Shop.
Bass Pro Shop was one of his sponsors. He had that all on his vehicles. I mean, he could not have been nicer and more complimentary, and he said he would be happy to come back and meet with us. He also said he'd be happy to come back and put on some more fishing tournaments, so I hope that he will do that and that we'll listen to him. I know your new photographer got a few pictures, yes, or some on my Facebook page with the, I'm not actually holding the fish, but I'm standing between the guys with the fish, so it was just a lot of fun to see the people that were down there enjoying it, and it couldn't have been a more beautiful day. I mean, we lucked out.
Words out in the community, and it will be out in the fishing community. I know that fishing tournaments for bass fishermen, they start in March, and it doesn't matter, rain, sleet, or shine. I've seen boaters going out in the snow, and I've seen them going out in a driving rain for tournaments. It don't slow them down. So I think, I think you're going to see a lot of activity, and, you know, maybe we have a, we have a growing pain problem there. That'll be a good thing.
Well, and they also said to Sandra and I that that boat launch, in their opinion, had the potential for being the top boat launch in the whole country, and I thought that was really...
He did say that. He volunteered that. I mean, you know, I think that we wanted it to be very nice, but he, he said that multiple times to us. He had a TV camera crew there with him, shooting some footage from it, so, of his own show that he does.
Great.
I think it was great for Paducah.
You gotta find out what that criteria is, if that's, if that's what we're shooting for.
Wall-to-wall trucks and trailers.
Yeah. And also, there were a lot of families down there on bicycles, you know, that had ridden their bikes down in there, walking and riding their bikes, visiting the area. So I, it was a beautiful day. I just happened to drive by there to check it out. It was a catfish. I've never seen some so big, so...
Did they do that weigh-in on property down there? They did the weigh-in there?
Yeah, they did.
They had the game wardens there.
Threw them back in.
And measured.
They put all of them back in. It was a great, great to watch it.
I've had, I've had the opportunity to do, to work with FLW, and I remember going down into Birmingham, Alabama, on Hamilton Lake, and they were fishing, and I'd never gone to a professional bass weigh-in before. We're in this arena, there's like eight thousand people there, and these guys, they bring this fish up out of this black bag, man, and it's flopping, and the place is going crazy. And I looked at my youngest daughter, I said, guys, you hear this, we're not at a concert. This is a bass weigh-in. That's the kind of energy that was going on in the place. So I've experienced that. That's electric.
Yeah. He was from, out of, he was from Jackson, Tennessee, but the people with him were from Alabama, all, all over. If you drove around and looked at the license plates, they were all over, and they'd spent the night here. They did not drive in at four o'clock in the morning just to get out in the water. They had been here the night before, and they were very complimentary of the hotel they'd stayed in, and of course, we told them about our new hotel we would have downtown soon, but...
A lot of these tournament fishermen have fifty to sixty thousand dollars tied up in what's behind their truck.
Yes.
They use it year-round.
Yes, so it was very nice.
Not to be a killjoy, I, actually, one question on the money. The money that we allocated for the project last spring, does the seventeen thousand, is it within the money we allocated? Are we spending more money, or are we just spending?
Are you asking the question, are we having to go from some other part of these finances to cover this cost?
Yeah, I mean, we had...
The answer to that question is no.
So it's within the...
These monies are within the project account.
Okay.
We actually, I'll go ahead and share this with you now. From our permitting point of view, we've got three years, or fi, three to five years worth of environmental monitoring.
Right.
Of tree mortality, of our environmental mitigation, that there will be, you know, anywhere from three to five thousand dollars a year that's spent until we've totally got through the monitoring process of the permit. So that money is in there too, as well.
Okay.
For that.
Just want to point out that that information was contained in the Agenda Action Form that was a public document.
Okay. We're still under, we're still...
We're still within the appropriated monies that were approved by this board.
Okay, or at least part of the board. Great, okay. Thank you, Rick.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
You want to segue to the other?
Fire.
Sure. Commissioner Wilson, please.
Do you want the chief to come up and sign the...
Well, he, no, we'll go ahead.
That's it.
Ready, ready for me?
We're gonna do this, Barry, and then we'll be right with you, and we'll get some signatures down here.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Aye.
Rick?
Mayor Commission, this is a cooperative, I guess, right-of-way closure among the neighborhood out in the Lone Oak area, adjacent to vacant land that wish to be, wishes to be developed. The right-of-way is an irregular shaped piece of right-of-way. I don't know if you've looked at the attachments on that, but it's a piece of old right-of-way that has never been improved, that was part of an annexation the city made in the mid-seventies when we annexed Kmart and that area out there. And the vacant land out there is currently being developed into a fourplex continuation of a fourplex, I guess, high-density residential, and the closure of that allows the developer to make that development work better and also work with the neighbors as well.
We have quite a few of those around, don't we?
We have a lot of, well, for example, if you're familiar with Island Creek, we actually have right-of-ways that extend through Island Creek across the water. We have a lot of areas in town that have dead-end right-of-ways that are unimproved, may have large trees in them. I think our forefathers, when they were plating the City of Paducah, they were using the grid system a lot of times, and then they would just extend that grid out in an area. But there are right-of-ways that we have in Paducah that are hundred years old or older that have never been improved on that, and they're adjacent to a lot of times residential property. Some of these are in the residential developed area where there may be a house on one side of a right-of-way and a house on the other side of the right-of-way, and maybe there's a gravel drive in between the two of them, or the remnants of some asphalt as well. A lot of times, we get calls asking us, when are you gonna pave this? But it only serves two people. So if it's, if it's passable and it's, you know, we don't necessarily make, put those as priorities on paving what appears to be driveways on public streets or public right-of-way. So we do get those occasionally.
Thank you. You have the, the next one too, Rick. You're just popular tonight. Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
It's Tammy's fault.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of a fifteen... A portion of fifteen-foot alley from Bethel Street toward Main Street, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of a portion of an alley from Bethel Street toward Main Street, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public way to be closed.
Second. Rick?
Similar situation, Mayor Commission, we're adjacent right-of-way that is no longer needed by the, the public and/or the utility companies. Application has come before this board to make use of that property, and see no use for that to stay within the public's responsibility, so we're putting this recommendation before you this evening.
And when we do that, we divide that property equally?
Actually, when public property is abandoned, a property line goes right down the middle of the public way, and the half that's adjoining or adjacent to the adjoining property goes to that property. However, there are times where folks don't wish to receive their half, and then they work out an arrangement with the adjacent property owner where they may quitclaim their half to the adjacent property owner who's getting the other half. So it's, it's more of a cooperative deal, and we do not necessarily, we don't close right-of-ways. The City of Paducah doesn't close right-of-ways because that would be forcing properties on the adjacent property owner. For example, let's take an undeveloped right-of-way. We wouldn't say, we want to close that, because that would force that adjacent property owner to take on a half of property he or she may not want. That would force them to begin to pay taxes on that piece of property that was forced on them. So as, as a public body, we don't make it a practice to go out there and say, we don't want to take care of that and, and force the closure, because we actually force people to take on the responsibility of property they may not want. So most every closure you see is by, the applicant has a desire and a need to use it, whereas the public may not have this, a need for it. We, we look for that. For example, if we have a utility in, in one of those closed areas, we'll be careful about that and say, well, we'll close it, but we'll maintain an easement. So it's something that gets a lot of scrutiny before it gets to you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll sign our contract. Mr. Carter, if you'll come up?
Doesn't matter which one you pick.
No.
Why's that looking at horse dog?
Twenty years in here. This is...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
For the dicks.
Go ahead and fill the deck.
When it pours.
That's what the agenda says.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't do that.
You did.
Thank you.
I don't know if that happened.
Okay, so we have City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've asked Pam Spencer to make a presentation on the status of our follow-up to our citizens' survey. As you recall, that launched three focus committees, two of which have completed their work. The third is active and, and will be hopefully in the near term, but I thought that with the two complete and, and going into budget season, it would be timely to bring forward the, the material that was produced by the committee. So Pam, if you would.
Okay. Mayor Commissioners, before I get into the committee recommendations, just a quick background for the public to remember how all this process started. There was discussion internally in 2011, 2012 about conducting a citizen survey. And then at the June 5th Budget Workshop, the City Manager and I presented, using the National Research Center as the mechanism for doing the citizen survey. That's through the ICMA. And so that was when we first did the first major presentation that the public and the elected body would be able to learn some of the details. Then we had another workshop on January 9th, 2013, and that's when we discussed all those custom question options. That's when we were developing the survey instrument. The survey instrument was put together, and February of April of last year, the National Research Center mailed twelve hundred random surveys to households in Paducah for their, the survey and data collection. And then we had the next workshop last year on June 12th. That was with the National Research Center. Michelle Kobayashi went over the, the results, and then we started working on priorities, developing what things we wanted to strengthen for the City of Paducah. And there were three priorities, and those were the three committees that resulted. The city's role in economic development, that committee continues to, to work on their action plan. Neighborhood revitalization and community engagement. The second two committees have met three times each, and they have recommendations to present. Now, the guide that each committee used was to take the priority. We started with three priorities, develop strategies, and then develop tactics, actual things that you could do under each one of those strategies. And some of those tactics would require either a budget allocation, policy discussion, some were kind of low-hanging fruit, so it's, it's a different variety of tactics under each one of those. So starting with the community engagement committee, each committee has a director team that is helping to facilitate it. That committee is led by Fire Chief Steve Kyle and me. Committee members, Mayor Kaler, Commissioner Abraham, Danny Fugate, our Section Eight Housing Director, Greg Mueller, our Information Technology Director, Robin Newberry, Executive Assistant at the Police Department, Andrea Underwood with Paducah Power Systems, she's the Director of Community Relations and Marketing, and we had Chris Yarber, our Engineering Public Works Operations Manager. The committee met three times, once in September, October, and November, and one of the first things that they did was review the citizen survey results, which the results were not negative. They were actually very similar to what other cities have for public information. So this was something that we wanted to strengthen in the city, but it wasn't something that we were starting behind the eight ball. We were actually comparing ourselves to other cities fairly decently. And then we also looked at the existing, existing engagement tools that we use in the City of Paducah or have used recently. There were three strategies, basically a continuum. If you look at engagement, the first strategy is basically getting information out to the public so that they can have an understanding. The second strategy is trying to get some feedback, and you think social media sometimes gives you that feedback, and there's other opportunities. And then the third strategy is try to empower the citizens through engagement, where they are helping you make decisions for the city. So those three strategies resulted in a bunch of tactics. So the first tactic under getting information out to the public was looking at trying to increase the traffic to the city's website. The city's website, if you Google City of Paducah, that's the first thing that's going to pop up. A government website is kind of one of the first things that any city has to put out there. Our traffic is increasing on the website. More people are getting into technology. We've seen about a twenty-five percent increase in just the last year. Some months, I've seen up to forty percent increase. So more and more people are getting into the website and taking a look at things. One of the aha moments that we had as a committee was that we're doing a lot of things to engage the community. All those things are out there on the website, but they're in different places. Maybe come up with an engagement initiative, a logo, a name, pull all these things together with any new ideas, and have one thing that you can promote. And we even talked about names like Paducah Hears, Paducah Listens, just different kinds of, of names like that. So that would take some review. One thing that we are looking at online is paying your fees online. SunGuard, our major software that operates our financial services, that is something that we are looking at, the opportunity to pay fees. Right now, you can register for parks programs online, but a lot of other things you can't do online through the city yet. Look at informational graphics. We have a lot of information out there, but it's in paragraphs. Try to make it more visual. People can pick up things in different methods of learning. Looking at maybe a quick response code, that's those little square bar codes that you see on a lot of promotional materials, maybe create one of those. Maybe look into a mobile website, where if you pulled up the city's website on your smartphone, it's not the whole website, it's just the pieces that are more frequently visited. Looking at information distribution, a lot of these things are related, very similar, promoting the engagement initiatives. Look at distribution lists, see if we can get ourselves on other distribution lists. Work with the schools, maybe work with churches, things like that. Look at providing information when a person comes in to either register for services or if they come into the Finance Department, have other information there that they may take away. Look for those opportunities that we might be missing. Citizens Police Academy, that is one of the best success stories that this city has had in getting people involved and engaged. And look at trying to increase the number of participants. We've had several seasons of the Citizens Police Academy. Maybe look at structuring it a little bit differently to bring more people to it. Sometimes it's full, other times they, they need people to participate, so we're just kind of review that. Little things like, look at your email signature line. How can you promote the city that way? Promote our YouTube page. We have over two-hundred-and-forty videos on the city's YouTube page. All city commission meetings are on there since, I think, 2009. Planning commission meetings and all the programming on Government 11 is out there on YouTube. We have display cabinets at the mall, and find out if there's more information that we can put out there at the display cabinets. This is something that would take some research. Utilizing an alert system, a text or an app to delete breaking news information. There are some cities that are doing that and, and sending out an alert, say, like a street closure or a water main break. Those are usually an app or some sort of alert system. Feedback through consultation, that's the second strategy that kind of goes up on the continuum. This was talked about, written segments, where citizens submit questions, and then written segments come out either as a news release or some sort of way to have the mayor and commissioners or the city manager answer those questions, get that information out. What are the citizens wanting to know? Let's get it out to them in some sort of written segment. Look at maybe town hall-type meetings to get that kind of feedback. Maybe look at using a commission workshop to answer questions that were submitted prior, just using a few minutes from a commission workshop in answering some of those questions that citizens may have. Visit those neighborhood organizations. Find out what neighborhood organizations are out there and see if they would like to have elected officials and staff just come and, and sit and chat. We've had neighborhood walks in the past. We've always asked neighborhoods to invite us to come walk with them. Maybe get some more of those going. Maybe have to invite ourselves to a neighborhood. Visit citizens at coffee shops. Coffee with a cop is going quite, quite well with the police department. Maybe look at more opportunities like that. And improving customer service, this is something that every agency, every private company always looks at. You can never be too good at customer service. Now, the third strategy, it's a little bit harder to come up with those empowerment opportunities, but one that we talked about was attending student council meetings. Start meeting with the young folks and get them engaged at a young age and get them involved in city government. Make them part of the decision-making process. And then the other one that would take some research and possibly some funding, a 3-1-1 system. Those are systems where, they can be a phone app, or a lot of times they're on a city's website, where people would post their problem, get an email back saying, we have your information. Sometimes it could be a pothole, or it could be other types of problems or information. A lot of cities start with maybe a pothole-type reporting system, where you report a pothole, and then the information comes back to the citizen on some feedback. But that's a 3-1-1 information system. We can either take questions on this committee, or I can move on to the next committee and do questions at the end. There's a lot of information here. You want me to move on to the next committee?
Sure.
Okay. The next committee was Neighborhood Revitalization. That was the second priority. That is led by the director team of Steve Irvin, our Planning Director, and Park Services Director, Mark Thompson. The committee members were Commissioner Rhodes, Monica Belak with the... the information comes back to the citizen on some feedback. But that's a 3-1-1 information system. We can either take questions on this committee or I can move on to the next committee and do questions at the end. There's a lot of information here. You want me to move on to the next committee? Okay. The next committee was neighborhood revitalization. That was the second priority. That is led by the director team of Steve Irvin, our planning director, and Park Services Director Mark Thompson. The committee members were Commissioner Rhodes, Monica Belak with the Paducah Public School System, Greg Cherry, our Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention, Charlie Doherty, our Community Development Planner, Jeff Mills with US Bank, and Burford Wilson with our Urban Renewal Agency. He's the chairman. They met almost the same days as the other committee. I think they were off like a day or two on some, September, October, and November. They started with fourteen strategies and tried to, to narrow them down, narrow the focus. So they ended up with two strategies and the first strategy has several parts. Enhance your neighborhood code enforcement, structure demolition, infrastructure improvements, and infill development strategies. That was one strategy with several parts under it. So one of the tactics would be to increase the inspections, to rid alleys and properties of rubbish. That is definitely a, a visual thing for neighborhoods. Another tactic, take a look at our demolition budget and see if we need to increase it. Our prevention has done a lot of demolitions in the last year and we get a lot of feedback from neighborhoods saying, thank you, because some of these homes are, are, they can't be saved. They, they have to go. Look at our budget for sidewalk and street improvements, see if we want to increase it. And this one has a few parts. This is an infill strategy. When we look at our vacant property that we own, say after a demolition, we may have a vacant lot then. And look at other properties that are within the low to moderate census tracts. What if somebody could come to City Hall and say, I would like to have one of your vacant lots? Do you have any house plans that maybe I could have? This would be something that they could possibly have. We would offer as an incentive some house plans for them to build a, a house on, that fits the neighborhood's character and put it on that lot. Or it doesn't have to be a city-owned lot, it could be some of those other properties. Also, we would look at maybe waiving the permit fees and then maybe look at establish a down payment assistance forgivable loan for any infill construction on those city lots or in a low to moderate census tract. And also just look at our vacant parcels and see if there's a way to pull some of them together to develop some sort of affordable housing unit or just kind of look at everything in a whole. Also, the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood Plan has been extremely successful. It is coming to the end of its, I guess, lifespan in the fact of what the city would be putting toward it. It's got a little bit more time left, but it's now to the point of what do we want to do next? Do we want to select the next neighborhood? So that would be something that a strategy needs to be put together for the next year or two to identify that next neighborhood. The other strategy from the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan focused mainly on connectivity, especially with bicycles, shared use paths in bike lanes. So one of the, the tactics was to hold a public forum to ask the public, what routes would they like to share the road on? What routes do you think are the best for the bicycles as well as the motorists and where would we put those signs on sharing the road? Look at educating the bicyclists as well as the motorists and start looking at grants, including the Safe Route to Schools grant. So that was that strategy. Quickly, what would be next for those two committees? Take a look at all those strategies and tactics and direct those to the applicable department for review and consideration. That would be one of the first steps because there's several departments on both these committees that would be pulled into this. And some of those tactics are, like I said before, there might be just a minor enhancement. Others may take some policy decisions and some funding and some research. And some of those tactics might be brought before you in the decision-making project as we look toward our fiscal year budget. Phew, that was a lot of information, a lot of work by two committees.
I might point out that of the two, it's interesting because one is more about what we're doing and the other one is how we're going about doing it. So clearly the, the one with citizen engagement and how we're going about doing it is the one that I think we could begin to implement things or consider things in the short term. The other one, of course, is one that would potentially entail more considerations. It might take a little more time because it's more resource-driven.
Thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Thank everyone, because everybody here has served on a committee.
Lot of information.
Any other questions?
I do want to thank Pam as well. She's, this, this has been her project since the word go and I think she's done a fabulous job and I think it's proving to have been a, a good project and worth everybody's time and it's not done yet by a long shot. So I think the fruits of this thing will continue to bear out for a, a good long time and hopefully we'll reach a point where we'll review the decision-making process leading up to doing the National Citizen Survey and determine that we want to do it again at some point and then continue with the follow-through type of activities like this or, or maybe something else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Any commissioners' comments tonight?
I have one. There is a gentleman called to my attention that he noticed on some of our public, government buildings, flagpoles, that flags are torn or getting ragged, you know, the ends of it. And, and there's a very, and I'm sure we're all, we're all aware, there's a very specific etiquette that you follow when removing a flag. And just want our guys to look around and see if we have any flags that need to be removed. And then I think there is a, a group of veterans that will come and, and take care of that. So just want to make you aware of that. Just keep an eye out for those.
I just call Mark when I see one. I don't know if you're it, but if I see one, I've usually called him and said, can you do something?
Mayor Commission, both Mark and I respect that and appreciate that. We share responsibilities. For example, some of the sites in town, Engineering Public Works takes care of, other sites in town, Parks takes care of, and then some sites in town where people wish to fly flags, we don't have any responsibility over because they're not city buildings.
Right.
So, and we've, we've purchased a lot of flags to make sure that our folks, you know, once one starts to get tattered, that we change that, change that out as, as soon as we can for those things. But it's something that, I believe that gentleman, he came into my office, he was very disturbed by that and we were somewhat embarrassed by that. We get caught up in doing things and sometimes we don't pay attention to some of the things that others are. I didn't, I wasn't fortunate enough to serve in the military and I say this in front of you all as well as the public, I wished I had, but there, to the, to a military man, the, the flag means something different to them than the average citizen because they've served that. And we appreciate and respect that. So Mark and I have, have worked together on that, but some flags in town are not necessarily our responsibility, but we're going to take a more vigilant approach to, as soon as we start seeing that, we need to take care of that.
I'm sure he'd appreciate it. I know we would. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comments tonight? We do not have an executive session, so meetings adjourned. Thank you.